That was not directed at you. You are okay. There we go. All right, we're going to open up our formal session at 10:09 on October 23rd. Sorry for the delay today, and I'm going to ask Joya to lead us in a flag salute.
Ready? Let your flag be sent to the flag. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Calendar session, anything to change on the calendar? So. Nope, okay. D's public comment, if anybody has any public comment, fill out a tan card that looks like this. If you are online, raise your virtual hand. We do have one in-house right now, so I'm going to call on that person first, and it is Melody McMaster. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Melody McMaster from Newburgh, Oregon, and I have lived in the county since 1981. I'm here because I care deeply about our communities and the potential of the Yamhailas Trail, not just as a project, but as an opportunity for the future for Yamhill County. Last week, when I spoke, I mentioned the possibility that the county might consider selling the trail property. Only minutes later did I learn from another speaker that this is indeed something being discussed. So today, I'd like to ask what would, what that would truly cost, not only in dollars, but in what we'd lose as a community. The corridor has deep roots in our history. It was created by the railroad in the 1800s, and in 2017, the county purchased the 12.48 mile rail corridor from Union Pacific Railroad using a combination of 1.4 million in grant funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation. Along with private donations, it was bought with a shared vision to connect our towns, give families a safe place to walk or bike, provide a safety corridor between schools, and bring businesses to our local communities. And bring business to our local communities. The Yamhailas Trail is one of the few pieces of land in Yamhill County that still belongs to all of us, a continuous public space with incredible potential. Before we even consider giving them up, the public deserves to know a few things clearly. What would the county actually gain financially from a sale? Would the county have to repay any of the grant funds or other public money used to acquire the property, and if so, how much? I would like the county administrator to provide that information publicly and for it to be discussed at an upcoming meeting. What would the legal and administrative costs be to complete such a sale? But beyond the numbers, once this public land is sold, it's gone. Getting something like this back would be nearly impossible. We would lose the chance to create a safe scenic connection between our communities, something many other Oregon counties have done successfully and are proud of. During the Great American Shake-Up, I spoke with Commissioner Kit Johnston. He told me that even if a majority of his constituents supported the trail, he would still oppose it because many nearby farmers would fight it and that the project had already been denied by Luba. I decided to look into that. From what I found, Luba did not deny the project. It remanded parts of it back to the county for further review or correction. That means the project wasn't rejected outright. It required additional work to address the concerns of nearby farmers, which is justifiably so. This makes it even more concerning that a single commissioner would not act even if voters overwhelmingly wanted it. So I'd like to ask, has the board considered ways to make this a win-win project for both the trail and the surrounding agricultural community? For example, have they applied for grants to help with fencing drainage and access improvements? Have you explored erosion control and drainage enhancements that would benefit both the trail and the adjacent farmland? Considered tax or recognition incentives for cooperating landowners? Looked into gates or access controls to accommodate spraying seasons of farm operations? Met one-on-one with farmers to listen to their feedback and find solutions together? Even thinking creatively, could land exchanges near Highway 47 be an option to reduce impacts and improve alignment? Many farmers are often multi-generational. Their children and grandchildren like ours could enjoy this trail. This is a chance for the board to show care for the entire community, leaving a lasting legacy, and create something that benefits generations to come. If the trail is sold, the negative impact will fall on the county and history will remember it. If it's preserved, it will serve our community for decades. Thank you for your time and for your service to Yamhill County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Seeing none, anybody online, raise your virtual hand. Can you scroll through that, Bailey? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Thank you. Department updates. We have Joya Gudrum from our Economic Development Department, and she's going to give us an update.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you all. Thank you. Thanks for this time today. So you may recall at last year's update, I talked about the four strategies I have been using to execute economic development activities in Yamhill County, and I'll briefly update you on what I have been doing, although you know a lot of what I've been doing because we talk about that. So the first objective was create communities ready to receive business. In support of this objective, one of the things I do is connect businesses to county depart, businesses and county departments, such as planning and the assessor's office. I let businesses know about incentives such as the cancellation on assessment of commercial properties and the rural industrial tax exemption. I can assist with completion of those applications. Although we have not received any, there are some businesses that I'm working with and have told them about this because they are in the process of doing some development on their property. Excuse me. Both programs provide tax abatements to the business during the construction phase and for three years after construction, and you may recall that we did this last December. We initiated the rural industrial tax exemption. I work with agencies where possible to pave the way for business success. I work with partner organizations to assist businesses experiencing issues with local government. And lastly, I stay informed on legislative issues, federal, state, and local that impact our business community. Objective two, retain, expand, and recruit business. I've connected with over 100 businesses since May for a variety of reasons such as assistance with identifying sources of funding, questions from new businesses, everything from licensing to insurance requirements. Actually, someone did call me and ask me what insurance they needed. I couldn't help them with that, but I did, I, I gave them information that they could go and discuss with their insurance agent about what they needed to do. Let's see. I assist with local businesses with connections to funding to grow their business, and most calls, emails, and requests from businesses are related to funding needs and grant information. Other resources I provide include introductions to the SBDC, so I know a lot of people. And, and, and so I'm really good at connecting people to others like the COG Business Oregon. I provide information on business incentive programs like the Rural and Tax, Rural Industrial Tax Credit and Enterprise Zones. We have two of them here in Yamhill County. The YC Economic Development Newsletter, Manufacturing Day, and County Regulations. And I schedule tours for you, which we are working on right now, and we're going to be going to Newburgh coming up soon to visit the Tiger Manufacturing Program at Newburgh High. I've been working with MEDP on the YC Economic Development Alliance, the purpose of which is to ensure coordination of economic development programs within the county, cities, and Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. We also have Mid Lamont Valley COG there, SED Core, and Business Oregon. So we're really bringing all of those organizations together to look at where we can make sure we're not having multiple meetings with organizations for one business when we can bring them all together at one time. We meet monthly, and just this week, we attended a presentation. Commissioner Johnston was there, and Grand Ron from their Economic Development and Lands team, and that was really interesting to learn about what they're trying to do out there. I meet with representatives from a variety of businesses, both local and multinational, to encourage business in Yamhill County. Most recently, a multinational company seeking to boost more hazelnut farming in our region. I attend the mid, lunch, excuse me, Launch Mid Valley Coffee Club for Startups, Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Forums, MEDP Events, SED Core Events, Oregon Entrepreneur Network events, Corporate Coffee, and Shemekata SBDC Workshops, where I connect with many new and existing businesses. I attend the Workforce Integration Network Meetings. Those are monthly, and those focus on workforce development, particularly targeted towards high school students. Our countywide manufacturing day is a collaboration with members of WIN. Objective three, identify and commit resources that will invest in YC Economic Development. I meet with and support county departments when needed. For example, I will be meeting with Community Justice, which is tomorrow, actually, a meeting with them, to discuss employment of formerly incarcerated individuals. I have met with and connect our Abacus and TTRS programs to businesses seeking workers. As I mentioned, I'm working with a team from WIN, and this is MEDP, Barbara Roberts CTC, the Delphian School Unidos, and MAC High to organize Manufacturing Day tours for students and the Ready or Not program. That's going to be on November 20th. The Ready or Not program is a one-day experience for high school students to run a manufacturing company, giving them a simulated experience exploring careers in manufacturing. And if you'd like to come, I'll, I'll make sure that you know where we'll be and the date and the information.
Yes.
I create an issue that Yamhill County Economic Development Newsletter curated information for small businesses. It includes a variety of resources such as federal government updates, educational opportunities, grants and funding, and legislative updates. There are over 300 on the recipient list, and it continues to grow. I am proud to say that the newsletter is very well-received and that many of our partner economic development organizations share the information with their constituents. I don't know if you noticed, but sometimes the chamber puts the Economic Development Newsletter in their newsletter. Objective four, develop and support vibrant communities. I convene a quarterly county economic development meeting with our cities to gain information on challenges, updates, and business activities. I meet with representatives from utilities and other services to support communities. For example, I recently met with a utility regarding a hotel project in Yamhill County and recently sat in on a one-stop financing event for sanitary sewer system in one of our communities. Other meetings I attend include the Newburgh Dundee Bypass, Greater Portland Economic Development Meetings, and Regional Solutions Advisory Committee. I also stay on top of our ARPA contracts, and I currently manage the economic development funding ones, which include childcare broadband, not-for-profit support, and water sewer projects in Yamhill County. Currently, there are eight outstanding grants totaling $5,940,825.61, including $1,053,486.15 remaining for broadband. All not-for-profit projects were completed. I work on, with county council to revise agreements when needed, request and maintain progress reports on projects, create and submit closing letters on completed projects, and submit ARPA update to our county administrator for his reports to the state and the treasury. Administratively, as you know, economic development is funded through lottery dollars. We are required to submit an annual report to the state, which I submitted earlier this month. Annually, we are required to renew our unique identity ID on SAM.gov, and so I do that as well to ensure compliance with federal funding requirements. In community involvement, I am a board member of trustees with the Willamette Valley Medical Center, and I'm the board chair this year, and will be stepping down in December as chair, and, and I'll go back to just being a board member, and I do meet with the CEO on a regular basis. I present to various groups on Yamhill County Economic Development Initiatives, and just yesterday, I was a guest speaker at the Lions Club and sat with our former DA Brad Berry, who is enjoying his retirement. I thought you might want to know that. And I, I do some volunteer work for myself as my time allows, and most recently, I was, I volunteered at the Scottish Festival. And so that's kind of where I am. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for that. And the one thing that you didn't touch on is fielding phone calls from commissioners that, hey, is there any funding opportunity for this? Hey, what do you? I appreciate your updates that you give in the newsletter. I do peruse them, and I appreciate what you do and what you bring for the county.
Thank you. I enjoy what I do.
I have appreciated the fact that I have somebody to go to when I don't know the answers, which I usually don't when it's coming, comes to economic development. Also, most specifically, I have really appreciated the fact that you have connected our women in recovery, and actually, they are working, and there's nothing, those jobs that are so precious for folks coming, coming out of either incarceration or newly in recovery, employers are a little leery about hiring them, but I appreciate how you have built up the confidence in that. Also, the startup businesses, the cottage businesses that you have been able to work with, I've appreciated how you've gotten them kind of up and running, and just you, you do a lot, and it's been really nice to have that in-house.
Thank you. I really enjoy what I do. I'm sorry?
The white glove.
Yes, the white glove.
The white glove.
Love it. Thank you.
Joy, I have, I do appreciate the level of investment you make, and especially to our small businesses where I come from, and I know that that kind of is really your sweet wheelhouse, not to mention that you, you know, the empowers and so on that you've still very much engage in. I'm wondering a couple of questions. Do you engage any in the urban renewal districts at all on that level? Or are you hands-off on that and let the cities deal with it?
I have not. I mean, I'm aware of McMinnville's Urban Renewal District, of course.
Yeah.
And, but I'm not involved in them. Those are more city matters.
Sure.
Though.
Okay, yeah, and then the lottery dollars that, you know, essentially pays for you, and then is a larger fund. I know in the past, we've done grant applications and so on. Do we have a plan for that moving forward for this? I don't think we did anything this year.
We have not.
Do we have anything next year lined up?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
And part of it was because of how last year rolled out. And, and so really took a step back to look at where we could be going in the future. I have some ideas on where we could be spending those dollars that don't necessarily support individual businesses, but are more global in the sense of supporting our youth and perhaps providing funding that could assist a business in hiring a youth employee or a formerly incarcerated employee, something on those.
Okay.
In, in that vein, certainly the eight businesses that received funding from us.
Yeah, are all great.
All did really well. And, you know, they hired people, they, they bought equipment to improve their businesses, and we went to see all of them.
Yeah.
Well, seven of them. We didn't get to the eighth one. And so, you know, that it has, it has helped those businesses.
Yeah, yeah, the investment on that level seemed to be, you know, I mean, I think I counted with, I can't remember the number, 17, 20, somewhere around there, employees, and then just the time saved with, you know, Alchemist there, you know, to be able to improve how many more croissants are made, or, you know, whatever.
Created efficiencies for them. It helped them grow their business, hire more people, improve their sales, gave them a greater reach. I don't know if you noticed, there was, I think I might have sent it to you, and I don't know, but there was a company that was mentioned on The View recently, that's in Newburgh, which was super exciting, and they were one of the recipients of our grant. So it was nice to see, because we do follow them. Yes, it was Miss Hannah's hot one.
And, yeah, so I would just be interested in where, you know, moving forward, what that plan is for that, and what that looks like and your ideas to move forward. I think what we did before was really great, and, but always open for new ideas, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll, I'll, I'll bring something forward to you.
Yeah.
That we'll talk about at some point.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Have a good rest of your morning.
Oh, the same to you. Thank you.
All right, item F's work session. There is none. G is our consent agenda. I would move to approve that. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. H is old business. There is none. I is other business. I1 is consideration of approval to authorize Sheriff Sam Elliott or designee to accept the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, DUII Deputy Grant, ENF AL dash 26 dash 14 dash 02 dash 00 dash 2026 dash 00000727 between Yamhill County and ODOT in the amount of $158,484.04 retroactive to October 15th, 2025 through September 30th, 2026.
Chair, I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None?
I'd like to just a little bit of clarifying, and maybe under Sheriff can I don't, I don't have any questions, but if I get anything wrong here, I think that, make sure and point out that this is a contract with ODOT through the federal government and language in that suggests of, puts us again at that compromised between the federal government and the state, and I believe, and after talking with our regional solutions and her conversations with some folks at the state, that really ODOT weighs the burden on this, so I just want to make sure that the people that are watching or listening to that, that that's clear. And as always, I take the sheriff and his office at his word and really trust that his position on this. So, yeah, I'll be voting yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I choose consideration of approval of amendment number one to agreement number 1029202 between Yamhill County and the Oregon Health Sciences University Board Order 25-102, adding funding in the amount of $30,312 effective October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2027.
Chair, I move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I3 is consideration to repeal Board Order 25-338 and approve a professional services agreement between Yamhill County and Sarah Architects Incorporated for additional design services contract documents and construction administration for the Government Services Building in the not-to-exceed amount of $122,873 effective upon full execution through December 31st, 2026. A little background on this?
Yeah, so just really quickly, this was on last week's agenda. There was a misprint on the agenda that said it was good for 60 days, but actually, that was the proposal was good for 60 days, not the proposed contract. So, and to make sure that we're clear on the record, I requested that we repeal last week's approval and replace it with this, and the only change is setting the, it's through December of '26.
Perfect. I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None.
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I4 is consideration of approval in the matter of adopting the employee handbook policy. And we have Patricia here. If anybody has any questions, motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All right.
Yeah.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I5, consideration of approval in the matter of adopting the hiring procedures policy. Yeah. Patricia, come on down.
Sorry, you guys went so fast. I didn't have a moment there. I do apologize in the amendment, and I'm not 100% sure, so please, somebody let me know. There was one additional amendment for the handbook. When this last came before the board, the review at that time, we had some clarifying language regarding paid leave Oregon. It is, just to clarify, that it is $1,000 with any Oregon employer, not the county. And then we added reference to the policy. That one little edit did not get in. There are also a couple of errant periods and commas that have made their way to my inbox. made their way to my inbox since it was posted. And so that won't change the, the content and materiality, but we do have a couple of those edits, including the one to, to PLO that I would like to also consider and will be sending via email for final posting and consideration if you would consider that so amended.
Yep.
The other thing that you guys did move pretty quick is I don't think the, the document set an effective date in there. So I just want to be, the effective date that we'd be looking at, because we need to post these to bulletin boards per the CBAs for fourteen days. So the effective dates for these three items would be after we're able to do the fourteen day posting requirement.
Do you need me to retract my motion and redo it?
No, I think we can have it reflected in the record that it won't be effective.
Right. It won't be effective until fourteen days after.
Okay. With amendments?
With amendments.
And everybody's okay with the amendments, with the language?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need anything from that? Out of an abundance of caution?
Yeah, it probably would be best to repeal the previous action and, and adopt and take another formal action.
So do you need a motion to repeal it then?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to repeal item, the motion made on, and vote made on item I four. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Date that you need? Fourteen days or is fourteen days good enough?
I'm going to go ahead and read it while you guys do that. Item I four is consideration of approval in the matter of adopting the employee handbook policy with amendments with the effective date of?
Is it the thirtieth? The seventh?
With the effective date of November seventh. I would move approval of that. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item I five, is there any corrections for I five? Or that was?
Hiring procedure policies.
The hiring of procedures.
Just a few periods and same.
There, there are minor grammatical, again, lots of folks looking at that out on, on the public website, which is great. And they're sending those to me. So I appreciate that, but nothing that should change the content at this time.
Fantastic. Okay. Item I five is consideration of approval in the matter of adopting the hiring procedures policy as amended.
As amended.
With the effective date of November seventh?
Seventh.
Seventh. All those, I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I six is consideration of approval in the matter of adopting the veterans' preference policy. Same deal, just periods.
Periods.
Commas. Okay.
Capitalization here and there.
Okay. Consideration approval in the matter of adopting a veteran's preference policy with amendments and effective date of November seventh. I would move approval. Any further discussions?
None.
None?
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Been a long time coming. Yes, I'm very excited.
Did you work on that?
Thank you.
How, what was your?
So the hiring and veterans' preference were really over here for Krista. She is been working with Kevin and myself on getting those policies updated. And then all of the leave policies and all of that language Megan's been working on. So my, really the kudos to that goes to my team for that one and really appreciative.
The handbook's in here. Yeah, I was, the handbook's in here.
Years, years.
Thank you to you and your staff. Yeah.
Thanks, Patricia.
Thank you.
J's public hearings. J one is receipt of pub, let's see, do I need to open this public hearing or you want me to?
Well, after you can read the agenda item and then open the hearing.
Okay. J one is receipt of public comment regarding the proposal fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six supplemental budget regarding the American Rescue Plan Act Fund two, three, two. Item A is consideration of approval of resolution in the matter of the adoption of the supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six regarding the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. I'm going to open up this public hearing at ten thirty-nine.
And I can go ahead and now that the hearing's open. And then just really quickly, this is a procedural thing. This is related to childcare funds. And then the time it took to, the funds had been obligated for quite some time, but the timing of getting kind of all the signatures on the various agreements ended up carrying into this fiscal year and it wasn't anticipated. I was anticipating that we were going to be writing the check last fiscal year, so it wasn't included in the budget. So in order for me to be able to release the funds, I need the funds appropriated in this year's budget. And so it's unanticipated revenue and I state all the reasons and the resolution and the wherehasses of how we got here.
And this is the balance owed to George Fox, the second?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's no, it's not any new decisions or anything. It's basically so I can write the check.
Okay.
Move approval?
Close the hearing, right? Well, or any public comment? Anybody online, raise your virtual hand or if there's anybody in the audience, raise your hand? Seeing none. Now I close this public hearing at ten forty. Any questions or concerns about this?
None.
None.
None. Okay.
I'd move approval.
Move approval. So Commissioner King move approval of J one. Is there any further discussion?
And I would just add that with this, this is the last, I mean, between this and a transfer to the clerk, this is the last, this is some of the challenges we have when we have a fund that has a set amount that we're spending to absolute zero. So it's.
The last out of all of them or just last out of the child care?
This should be the last.
Broadband's been all paid out.
And this is zeroing two thirty-two because we've already issued grant funds for all the various projects. And the rural broadband's a little bit different. We had already released the funds from two thirty-two. The other funds came out of another portion of the budget because that wasn't part of our ARPA allocation.
Okay.
That was DOS, State of Oregon had released those funds. So.
Okay.
This.
Well, not all of it was ours, right? Originally?
Yes, we paid a portion of it, but the majority of it, the two point three million for that project came from the state.
Cool.
So your reporting hasn't ended. You've got to continue reporting or?
Oh, yeah.
That's going to go on and on.
Oh, yeah. We continue to do quarterly reporting to the Treasury and to DOS on the status of projects and where we're at. But, and then it's subject to audits as well. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to announcements. Commissioner King?
I joined the AOC in the OJD court facilities. I was made a voting member on that committee and need to get with Ken still, but we, I don't know if you had a chance to watch that meeting or not, but yeah, okay. Oh, you were there. Okay. Yeah, they're going to ask for some plans by December fifth. And they're sending some examples of what other plans look like in the past for some remodel of our court along with others in the county. So there's some time to be in the budget for the OJD. I had a chance to meet with Tony at four D to formally start the conversation about a recovery school or satellite campus. And we are gonna have another conversation with Max, the principal at, I think it's Harmony, to be able to move that forward potentially through their organization in a couple of weeks. I'll keep you guys updated on that. Newburgh City Council was not very exciting, just council rules mostly. And clarifying some language with the state and federal grant processes that they have, they have a new grant facilitator through, through the city, which they lend out to community members as well. So if you're in business or nonprofit in Newburgh, reach out to City Administrator Will and he will help you with that. Dundee City Council as well. Presentation from a hotel. Can't remember the number of rooms. Was it a hundred sixty, something around? But breaking ground very soon on that. So that seemed to be the most exciting there. Community Justice Conference with Jessica Beach. We toured Juliet's house and Henderson House and got to hear from Jessica and some of her staff. Just the exciting work that they do in presenting to some of the colleagues from the region and as well as a panel of some gentlemen that have gone through the drug court and just been successes of the program and, and their, how the, the services that the county provide has really changed their lives in order to get not only their driver's licenses, but see their, you know, have visitation rights to their families and, you know, to stop hurting themselves and to really set goals for themselves long-term of, you know, one gentleman wanted to get his master's degree or maybe even his doctorate in order to be able to continue to help people in recovery. So that was really a great thing to attend. I know she was here a couple of weeks ago and talked about that conference. That was Sam, Sheriff Elliott and you know, again, our conversations usually talk about funding and so on. One of the concerns there is the state's budget didn't provide very much funding to, what was it, the marijuana officer that we have be able to really work dedicated to illegal gross. And so he's worked with him and asked you guys to reach out to your contacts at the state to maybe in the short session, session to be able to really advocate for some of those monies back. I mean, he even said, you know, even half because we are fully staffed. And so if that goes away, then he's faced with some difficult decisions on what that means. Last night met with some Carlton residents, talked about their concerns about the gas station. And they had their planning commission last night and they, the planning commission turned down the application. So that has, see what the next steps are there. As I've mentioned plenty of times at this point, but I'm hoping on November thirteenth to be able to bring a conversation to the, about TLT to the board. I'm just waiting for one more. Yes, on a calendar invite before I have a couple of the stakeholders here to really dive into that conversation as a board. Coffin Butte hearing last night in Benton County to appeal the decision for the planning commission to deny landfill expansion. Lots of public comment and in favor of approving. We'll see what happens. There's about ten years left, but if that goes away, our garbage gets to be a lot more expensive to haul to Eastern Oregon or, you know, whether that's by train or so on. So, yeah, I've been engaged in that pretty heavily, but that will affect our school districts, our farmers, our businesses, you know. Most of our garbage goes down to that facility.
Engaged in favor of expanding?
Yes, engaged in favor of extending and, and really making sure that, that, that at least our people up here, you know, are being, yeah, I testified in favor of last night in, in the expansion. So. And then obviously the big news this week is the federal budget, federal shutdown right now and SNAP update November first, nearly seventeen thousand Yamhill County residents will lose food coverage, SNAP coverage. My hope is that we can rally together to support and find food, especially during the holidays to our most vulnerable seniors, families and kids there. So that's, that's what I have. Commissioner Sturrock?
Thank you. We had our first meeting of the Yamhill County Suicide Prevention Coalition. CASA was there, educators, senior population, the behavioral health specialists for older people. The tribe was there with their Native Connections Project, Mayor Kim Morris, who has a, a personal investment in this because of her, of her loss. My recommendations at the end of it is that we include law enforcement and, excuse me, and veterans' population representatives because these are two populations that are really impacted by, by suicide. And also I ask that we have faith leaders from the community because there is a spiritual component to suicide. Special meeting of the Housing Authority related to changes in the federal requirements for housing. The CCO, we took a look at the first draft of our, our twenty-six budget. They are anticipating perhaps a twenty to twenty-five percent reduction in members due to the Medicaid work requirements. The clerk, want to thank our clerk, Carrie Hinton, for responding to concerns about increased real estate fraud. Think any, any of those who got property tax bills got that notification in the, in the property tax bill on how to sign up for the Property Recording Alert Service. So appreciate that. Voters were reminded by the clerk this week to insert their ballot correctly into the envelope to protect their privacy. Last night at the fairgrounds, four H was there. Want to thank Kehlani Cruz. She has been very receptive to work out, to work with the foster community to try to get the kids engaged in, in four H. Lots of folks were there and it was really impressive to see all the representation. So I enjoyed that. Thank you to all of the folks who took part in that. We're continuing to work on the response time changes to the ASA and it'll be brought back before the ASA committee. We're also having continued conversations with other county councils regarding the OHA behavioral health contracts, which we are being encouraged not to sign at this point. The sheriff conducted internal training at the courthouse with court staff to complement the active shooter training that we were at Commissioner Johnston in August and also the mass casualty protocol that was put in place. For those who don't remember, and this was a long time ago, there were two shootings in the courthouse in the past few decades and this was very important on, on the ground training. The sheriff's office is offering licensing amnesty through October thirty-first. If you don't have any outstanding citations, please do do that. Governor Kotek joined with governors in blue states to counter the guidance that the, from the Make America Healthy Initiative. And the Make America Healthy Initiative is addressing Americans having some of the worst health outcomes in the world. Also taking a look at the, some of the Congressional Budget Office numbers that are coming out in terms of, of Medicaid losses if nothing is done to mitigate that at this point. But I also wanted to take, because as we near the end of October, October was National Prevention of Bullying Month and they requested that people were orange in recognition of that. So I just wanted to read a few thoughts about National Bullying Prevention Month. We pause not just to acknowledge the harm that bullying causes, but to commit ourselves to building a workplace rooted in dignity and psychological safety for all of us. Bullying in the workplace can be subtle, systemic and deeply embedded in our culture. It can show up as microaggressions, tone policing, exclusion from decision-making or invalidating someone's lived experience. It can be identity-based harassment, targeting someone with a lateral aggression, a horizontal aggression, a vertical aggression or a frontal aggression. Let's be clear, harm is harm. And we need to move behind, beyond performative gestures and embrace transformative accountability. That means creating safe and inclusive spaces where everyone can show up fully and authentically, practicing active allyship, not in words, but in action. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Last Friday, had a great conversation. I mentioned it the week prior meeting that we were going to meet with Visic McMinnville and we addressed funding avenues for parks and I just, a huge shout out to Karen Olson and Lisa Macy Baker and Dan Gibson for offering the services of their group to see if there is avenues to write any grants or whatever that might pertain to our parks. Just, it was a great meeting. They're actually going to do a follow-up with Travis here in about at eleven today. So it's coming up pretty quick, just to get more details. So just really do appreciate those guys stepping forward and that connection came from when we had our Yamhill water access tour that we had. Karen and Lisa were both at that meeting along with many others. And it was a great connection and I really do appreciate them offering their services. Monday, I had the opportunity to get an update on the, from the Stoller Group for the projects that are coming to our area. projects that are coming to our area. One of them's in McMinnville. They've already broke ground for it. It's a hotel at the museum, the Aviation Museum. Another one is coming soon to downtown Dayton, on top of what they've already done in downtown Dayton. That afternoon ended up going out to for the Economic Alliance Group meeting and getting an update from the tribes on where they're at and program updates on what they have for the tribes out there. It's absolutely phenomenal out there what those guys are doing and Jan is a great resource to have, especially as we start tipping up this Economic Alliance Group for Yamhill County. Sheridan City Council was also Monday night. They issued twenty five hundred dollars in grant requests to the community. They made it pretty easy towards the end, knocked a couple off and then divided it all between the remaining. And so everybody seemed fairly fair in the end. And even huge shout out to three of the counselors that put their own money into it to basically bring the balance up a little bit so they could add funding for one more that they didn't want to remove from the group. So it's just great that those guys are putting their own money into it also. Tuesday, I got, I updated the Dundee City Council. I happened to be there in person and the mayor asked if I had any updates, so I thought it'd be a good time to update them on Metzger Park, the deed restriction, getting lifted on that. And then also some of our housing projects that we're moving along with for transitional transitional housing between the annex and the Abacus House. Also Tuesday afternoon had an ODOT meeting. It was Sheriff Sam Elliott, me, Dave Hagerberg and Counselor Chris Chenoweth from McMinnville. Really same conversations that we've been having with ODOT, just kind of internally trying to figure out funding wise, how we can move some things around to get McDougal roundabout over the finish line. It's still up in the air. There's still ideas out there to see if we can't get funding for it, but what is what the issue that is arising is that the original funds that came in from Bonamici's office years ago, it was about four million dollars. We're starting to come up with deadlines to have to appropriate those. So we now need to decide based on our, and we'll know in thirty days, but based on our timeframes that we have, if we have to then go address the three smaller projects in phase one around McDougal, which is West McDougal Road, East McDougal Road and Stoller Road intersections and do some realignments or signage changes or turn lanes at Stoller. Or i- if we run up to a timeframe, if we don't and we do have a little extra time and find another, I think it was, right now it's about three or four million for the roundabout at McDougal, then still save that money for those phases and put it towards the roundabout. So nothing set in stone yet, but very engaged with that, trying to figure out the best avenue to go forward. Wednesday night was McMinnville City Council joint session with their planning commission and they discussed the McMinnville Landing Project, the Innovation Center area out there towards between the hospital and the museum. There's a large parcel out there. I was on the committee along with many others from the community to discuss what it looks like out there, how much, how much commercial zone is going to be out there, how much industrial employment zone. The committee I felt like came up with a good overlay of what should be out there and the city council for the most part approved of what our committee came up with. It sounded like they were getting a little bit hung up in long conversations about putting a maximum on some of the larger, they're concerned about air quoting, big box stores coming in. To me, a lot of it, I think, comes down to the architecture of the big box stores. I think you still have a big box store. It's just how you design it. But they were still concerned of putting a maximum on what the square footage should be for a big box to come in. I think they landed on something reasonable. They were talking about a hundred and fifty thousand square foot max for any large retailer to come in. I think that's reasonable. I thought it was great. They didn't really land on anything. They just gave direction, sort of not finalized on it yet. It'll go through the public process so that the public can have their input on it. So I would recommend that you keep an eye out for that and also post reminders so that the community can be engaged in that. Tonight's Fair Board Meeting at five thirty. There's also a legislative forum tonight at Stillwater, which is right down the road from us on Fifth Street. Senator Starr, Rep Elmer and Rep Anna Scharf will be there. I encourage you guys go to go to get an update on how state legislative process went this session. I think we all pretty much know the biggest item they're going to discuss will probably be the transportation bill. So, uh, one last reminder, chat with the chair. I know I'm a couple of weeks out from this, but I feel like I need to give a couple of reminders on it. So chat with the chair is going to change from just this one meeting from November sixth to November seventh. So it's going to go from a Thursday to a Friday. And we're also going to change the location. It's going to be at the Sheridan Dairy Queen. I wanted to, for at least one meeting, kind of get out towards the West Valley and see if I can get some people come in from there and see if there's any community concerns that we need to hear about. Uh, it'll be still the same time, six PM. And that's all I got and I will update again next week on that just to make, so we're clear. So Lynn, and I'll, and I'll send Linda O'Hara a personal email because she comes to pretty much every single one that, hey, we're changing, but I really want her to come out to Sheridan and she knows how to ask really good questions. So I do appreciate her coming to them. That's all I got. If there's nothing else for the good of the order?
Nope.
Nope. I'm going to close her out at eleven AM. Thank you all for coming.